All right, welcome everyone to the Committee of the Whole for September 1st, 2020. Howlin', squallin', quiz, talikmagama, tla, squamish, amway, amway. We're having some fun with technology as we try and remember what we've forgotten over the summer, so bear with us, please. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and the first item of business is would someone move the adoption of the agenda? Mayor Elliott, Councilor Hertford, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Oh, carries, thank you. So the next item of business is Ministerial Order M192. We are excluding in-person attendance at this meeting on the basis that full public attendance in a manner consistent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time, and the district is ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability at this meeting by the following means: The meeting is being livestreamed, and a video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on an on-demand basis. So can I have someone move that? Councilor Anderson, Councilor Stoner-Secondes, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? No, motion carries. Okay, so I'm just gonna go over some of the procedures we have with electronic meetings. Council, everyone is expected to participate. Council members attending the meeting electronically are required to advise the Chair of the meeting of the following circumstances: When a council member disconnects or reconnects, so this can be recorded in the minutes, council members are to identify themselves when they advise the Chair they wish to be placed on the speakers list, or if I can see you, I will watch for your hands on the screen. With respect to a vote, council members are only required to state a nay vote. If you're in favor, you don't need to raise your hand or say anything. Please put your telephone or computer on mute unless you're speaking. Everyone should participate in the meeting. Please text the CAO or the corporate officer if you're having technical difficulties with your phone or computer, and we'll recess for up to 10 minutes if a technical difficulty occurs on our side. And so with that summary, I think we're ready to proceed to our first order of business. Do we have?
Excuse me, Chair, we don't have MLAs sturdy on the line yet.
Okay.
We're working to get him connected at the moment.
Do we have any shorter items of business we could touch on, or do we want to take a five-minute recess? And just collect ourselves?
We could take a five-minute recess because the other items are all fairly lengthy unless you want to... Yeah, they're all 30 minutes or more. We're talking to him now.
Okay, why don't we actually give Jordan 10 minutes, and then if we don't hear from him, we'll just press on with the meeting? So council, why don't we plan to come back actually at quarter after 1:00? And sorry about this, we're just letting MLAs sturdy, our first guest, letting him connect to the meeting. So see you at 1:15. Okay, so we are... Oh, no, we've got 1 minute. 2 here, here. But we've got Jordan, so that's good.
It says that my video is muted or disconnected. What does it say here? Attendee video disabled in this meeting.
Does he have video? Do you have video of Jordan?
I think you need to promote it.
Yeah.
Okay, just hang on.
He said, "I thought he was calling in."
He just said he's got video, so promote.
Okay.
I went to a different place where I am, and I got more bars, and maybe that's what solved the problem.
Okay, now put on the video.
Should be working, he should have the option.
There we go.
There it is.
Ah, perfect. All right.
Oh, but I have my flag still.
All right, well, welcome back, everyone, and welcome, Jordan. Very pleased to have you joining us, and I think we can give it to you for a brief introduction if you want to give one.
Well, sure, thanks, Chris, appreciate it, and thanks for the opportunity. Obviously, it's been challenging times for the last couple of months, and it looks like we're gonna continue on with a certain level of uncertainty and challenge. I think we all understand that there's a potential or the beginning of a second wave or potential for a second wave. We've got the kids coming back into school. I'm sure that you've been in good communication with School District 48 to help our constituents understand how that it's gonna work. And I have been generally supportive of what is going on with old school districts in West Vancouver, Grand Canyon, Deshays, where it seems to be, there's a real desire to do the right things. What the right things are, I guess, is to some degree a little bit uncertain, and we're gonna have to try, and we're gonna have to adapt, and we're gonna have to do the best we can do to ensure that everybody is safe, and we're not continuing or we're minimizing the spread of this infection. The, I think we've seen a little bit better data or a little bit more granular data in terms of COVID in the community, COVID in the region, and we understand that we do in terms of the total number of COVID cases relative to the size of our population, there's more, I think, than we would like to see, certainly. And so we're all gonna have to continue to be on our guard. Otherwise, I understand the number of things you wanted to talk about with regards to COVID recovery, and hopefully we're on the way to recovery, not just continuing in response. There's EMBC, cost recovery issues that you'd like to speak to, and then... There's UVCN this year, coming up fairly quickly, and obviously gonna be a very, very different UVCN from UVCNs of the past. But certainly in terms of communications with ministers, in terms of the desire of the District of Squamish, and by extension as well, I guess, the regional district, in terms of what you would like to try and achieve, I'm certainly happy to be there for you as a resource in any way that you would like me to work on your behalf. And I'm pleased to do that, be it in providing just some reflection or advice from, through my experience or connections or introductions, whatever I can do, just you let me know. But I think the important thing for me is to better understand where you want to go and what I can do to help you. And with that, I really would just like to hand it over to you and help me help you, I guess, is really what my intention would be.
Okay, thank you. Are there any particular areas with regards to their restart plan or other things the province are talking about that align with our strategic plan and pulling together COVID where you see particular opportunities for us that, you know, might be a better use of our efforts?
Well, obviously, you know, there's varieties of initiatives around housing, around vulnerable people, and around economy that we... That is going to be challenging for the whole, everybody, because it's not just the District of Squamish, it's the whole problem that has to be managed. So I don't have any specific advice, or I'd like to better hear from you what are the top three things that you'd like to see happening over the course of the next year, and that would help give us a little more focused conversation.
Okay, thank you. Maybe I'll open it up to council then, and if we can sort of focus on bigger picture in relation to our strategic plan and COVID questions that you might have for Jordan. Okay, well, while people are thinking about that, I know there is a question about... Oh, Mayor Elliott.
Hi, Jordan, thanks for joining us today. I think one of the things that is not just specific to Squamish, but has affected a few local governments, maybe a lot of local governments around the province, is the disconnect between what was covered under the EMBC management BC and the costs that local governments have incurred. And I know that we haven't seen the details yet on how the province is using the funds from the federal government, but there were costs incurred by local governments throughout the response to the pandemic that were funded in the early months, and prior to moving to Phase 3, where we were sort of supposed to return to a more business-as-usual and start covering these expenses ourselves, we weren't getting funded for things anymore. So, for example, we had to rent vehicles so that our staff could socially distance and get to work sites, and that was covered for the first few months, but then suddenly and abruptly it wasn't approved, even though we weren't at Phase 3-ish, which then allowed us to create these bubbles like of work families that could then travel in vehicles together. So there's been an inconsistency in how things have been applied, and I think it's important for you to know that we're out of pocket for things that we believe we should have been covered, continuously covered, until we entered Phase 3 of the pandemic response from the province. And I certainly would like some help in drawing the government's attention to that. And that's everything from the right cost to...
Do you have some numbers associated with that, Karen?
Yeah, I can give you some numbers, but to just give you a scope, we requested $70,000, just over $70,000 worth of expenditures to be authorized by EMBC, and only 57% of that total was approved. So almost half was left unaccounted for, but there are legitimate expenses that local governments didn't plan for in their budgets, and we would certainly like to see some of this money coming from the feds if the province is managing to help us bridge that gap, along with the gap in transit. But that's one of the things, is that I think it was, the goal was changed while we were still in response mode, which made it really challenging to suddenly wonder if we should continue to spend this money, which was the right thing for our staff and our community in keeping essential services going, at the same time knowing that they were no longer gonna be covered, and we would have to figure that out in our own budgets. So we're still under a state of emergency, we're still supposed to be responding, but we're not gonna cover their expenses anymore. And I recognize we have to work that into our budgets going forward, but sort of felt that at least until we enter Phase 3, it should have been staff's quota for covering our expenses.
And how do you define those expenses? How do you put a box around them and say, okay, this is exceptional, or this we feel should be incorporated within a COVID response compensation?
Well, certainly, we got memos from EMBC about what would be covered. We got more clarity early in the pandemic, and there were a few sort of pieces of correspondence that came our staff's way so they knew what would be covered and what wouldn't. I think the thing that was challenging was that things that were covered in Months 1 and 2 suddenly weren't covered anymore prior to our transition to Phase 3. So just as we were ramping up, you know, and trying to get things back to some sort of normal, our expenses weren't being covered anymore.
Right, right. Okay, well, I think that what would be helpful for you would be...
Like having a say in some detail about that.
Yeah, that would be helpful in terms of the types of expenses and the amounts, and then I'd also like to look, I'll talk to some of the other regions, tell us if you... We haven't had a mayor's call in a while, and so we haven't really discussed this, but this must be a common problem then.
There's certainly items the SLD is grappling with that were not covered. I imagine the same is true for Whistler and Pemberton. I couldn't speak to the folks in the city, but...
Okay, well, yeah, some detail on that, and we'll share that around, and, you know, I think we want to be united in that respect in terms of, you know, an approach to the province to lobby to reconsiderations.
Yeah, absolutely, and we know that there's funds being transferred from the feds to help local governments, so we would like to see that kind of cover this interim gap in our budgets.
Good. Council, anyone else? We do have a request. We have one of our resolutions to UVCN is regarding tiny homes, and I have a note to discuss this with MLAs sturdy. Councilor French, do you want to take the lead on this one?
Yeah, that's great, thanks, Councilor Penningill. Jordan, thanks for being with us today, it's an honor to have you on our program. As Councilor Penningill mentioned, Squamish has sponsored a resolution to the upcoming UVCN convention, and I'm going through the literature, seeing that we've got a three-hour window for our resolutions, and the tiny home resolution is on page 148 of Playbook, and I'm a little worried we maybe won't get to it, and then we'll actually be invoked. So that's really neither here nor there. Hopefully, we will get to it. I wanted to just get a sense from you, with housing challenges, the way that they are not just in Squamish, but Whistler, Pemberton, you know, Grand Bridge, Columbia, tiny homes not being legal in most jurisdictions, and not recognized as legitimate, can we start with just your own thoughts on tiny homes as a diverse form of housing that could potentially help with the crisis, or would you agree with that statement?
Oh, yes, I do. You know, we had a, I had one of my staff in a tiny home on my farm for two years, and I wasn't actually, don't tell the regional district. But no, I think that we look at need a diversity of housing forms. I read, I did read the resolution some weeks ago, though, and I admit to wondering why the resolution was being brought forward in that it was, it seemed to, I thought it was basically a municipal issue, and municipality can decide to support or allow for tiny homes or not. What is, what does the province need to do to, what do we need to change to support this type of initiative?
Well, one of the steps could or should be changes to the building code, because there are some building code restrictions that make it very challenging to have tiny homes fit within the building code.
Okay.
And some jurisdictions have modified building codes and foundations to give them up as tiny homes, mostly in the United States, not so much in Atlanta.
Have, has anybody done an assessment of how the BC building code would not allow for tiny homes, or are, I guess, it's almost another classification, like a Z240 or an A277 type of criteria for manufactured homes that are not your traditional on a foundation type of thing?
Yeah, and I have to admit, as much look as I download this, if there's one thing I've learned, it's complicated, and what you've just brought up speaks to that. There are different ways to address legalization and legitimization, and locking in on the one or the ones that are wanting to work for British Columbia is part of the challenge. And I think, in my mind, one of the goals of the resolution is to get the provincial government thinking about the role that the provincial government could play in legitimizing this form of diverse housing. So, not, maybe not much of an answer, but I really see the resolution as a springboard to just get us something, to get it high up on the radar, or not just the provincial government, but local government across British Columbia, that we are thinking about tiny homes as a solution, as one of the problem solvers for helping problems in communities.
Yeah, no, it's an interesting question. I'd very much like to better understand what the objection is to tiny homes, because generally speaking, you'd be talking about public safety, so the safety of the occupants. And so assuming there'd be some criteria around access to egress, then if you're in weight management or utility servicing, I guess there's an electrical component to the thing, and then, of course, there's energy. And it does, it's pretty hard to build a tiny home to, you know, step 3. So, you know, that's, I think, something else that needs to be considered. So I guess we need an assessment, and then if it's, if the objective is to have the province look at tiny homes and say, okay, how can we, how can we classify these things and what standards do we need to generate or to demand of builders? And especially on the safety side, I don't think that's an unreasonable request at all. The energy piece is a little more complicated, and I suppose the simplest thing would just prohibit the use of, you know, from a climate perspective anyway, is prohibit the use of fossil fuels and the, like, no gas, for example. And then, you know, this is a 2x4 construction with R12 insulation, it'll be a little bit cold, but it won't be generating any GHG, so I guess then you need to look at electricity. So I, you know, if, I guess the question is, how do we determine what the challenges are and what are the standards that need to be met? And whether that is a building code issue or not, or whether, you know, because a camper or recreational vehicle are built to some set of standards, but...
Yeah, and they're going to separate in their own. It doesn't necessarily fit into that category, there are some unique features of tiny homes that really separate them from our B's. So just one more question for you, if you think about your colleagues in Victoria the other night, MLAs, is this something that anybody is talking about, is it on anybody's radar as a solution for that type of housing?
No, it's not something that we hear discussed, the coach houses and second homes and density is certainly a pretty common conversation, but in that area, tiny homes really just haven't, don't get much more than a peripheral mention, so. I think some definitions and a beginning to look at how we would manage this. You know, and I ultimately want it to come down to, and I think you realize this, is the local government issue in many respects, because you start to see a proliferation of tiny homes on lots in residential neighborhoods, and whose problem is that? Not yours. A careful way to wish for, I guess, to some degree, but I certainly see a, you know, without, the situation at my farm was, there was a young guy from Quebec, a really nice guy, hard worker, no accommodation, and I had no accommodation on the farm. His father passed away and left him a small amount of money, about $25,000, I think he's in his early twenties, and he took that, and he bought a 20-foot trailer, and he's a handy guy, and he built a tiny home on that trailer, and that's his, it's father's legacy to him. It gave him a place to live and an opportunity to work for a couple of years at my place, and I thought it was a great solution. It fit for us, it didn't cause any issues, but, you know, we have space and, you know, access to the things that he needed in order to make it work, and that's not necessarily true for everybody. So I can see where neighbors would maybe not like that, if somebody parks a tiny home right up next to their, you know, next to their yard sort of thing, so. You know, ultimately, it's gonna come down to being a municipal issue, it seems to me. But in terms of the barriers from a, call it a safety perspective, an occupancy and safety perspective, and whether it needs to be part of the, are considered in the BC building code, I don't know. Right now, they do A277, which is a, they get it mixed up, A240 and A277 are both modular units, one needs to be set, put on a permanent foundation, and one could be put on a, like a cribbing foundation, so it doesn't need a permanent foundation. They're built to slightly different standards, and then there'll be a third modular criteria that will be coming into place, I think, next year, and that is for relocatable industrial accommodation. So, you know, camps and that sort of thing, where you can take a unit, and it doesn't need to be on a permanent footing, it's really essentially, you could drop it on the ground somewhere, and it's all self-contained, and then move away. But that's, then they're common in Alberta, there's an assistant to classify them in Alberta, but it's a little less common here in BC, and so we're just trying to grapple with that. But I see them being similar in some respects, although tiny homes would typically be built by an individual or somebody would do their own thing, whereas the relocatable industrial structure or industrial accommodation, A277, Z240s, are all generally built in a, through a process that's approved up by the CSA and the National Building Code, and it comes out of a factory. So there are some differences, but there are also some similarities. But obviously, I'll do a little bit of work on it and see what we can come up with in terms of what the province has done, if anything, so far.
Okay, thank you, MLAs sturdy.
Your talk to really not come again to the UVCN convention, thanks, yeah.
Yes, thank you. And I've got a couple of hands now, so I'll go to Mayor Elliott and then Councilor Stoner.
Jordan, I don't know if you're aware, but UVCN has sent in a couple of letters, one to Minister Robinson, one to Minister Trevana, specifically about transit. The one to Minister Robinson was more specific to the survey they did on local governments about what they're looking for in the recovery. I think, if you haven't seen them, they're helpful in terms of what local governments are focusing on and the key themes, broadband being one of them, and connecting all of our rural areas, especially around education and participation in the economy. But I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about transit, and in the letter to Minister Trevana, 90% of communities that work with BC Transit are still committed to their growth plans. And so I think it's important that, I'm hoping, the opposition also picks up on the need for continuing to fund transit while ridership catches up again in our recovery from the pandemic. We don't want to get set back years. You know, for a community like Squamish, who is still actually trying to get to a level of service that people find convenient, we're already now set back one year because no expansion plans were approved for this September. And I wouldn't want to see those expansions delayed again simply because ridership hasn't recovered in 2021. We need those buses to be there as people come back to the economy, as people are re-engaging with the community. So I would hope that that is a nonpartisan issue, transit is so important to this province, its economy, our greenhouse gas reduction plans, and I also note that the federal government has set aside infrastructure funding for regional transit in their new COVID recovery stream of the ISIP grants, and it would be a shame if we couldn't get regional transit approved for the Cedar Sky corridor and not take advantage of that funding. So I would hope that... I would hope that you would help convey that message. And if you haven't seen the letter to Minister Trevana from UBCM, I think it's really helpful. It provides some data of what people are thinking. And also, UBCM has proposed putting together a group of mayors that represent B.C. Transit communities to work with the minister on a recovery plan in the same way that TransLink has the mayor's council. There's no similar body on the B.C. Transit side. So UBCM has proposed to create that body and work with the minister on a recovery plan. I don't think we have a response to that letter yet. Perhaps UBCM has. But I think it's important to keep that pressure on, that this government doesn't forget that transit is actually a part of recovery. It's not an expense solely.
No, I, my position on regional transit hasn't changed. I did hear some grumblings earlier from, through the mayor's council around the expenditures, the big capital expenditures for TransLink, and that this wasn't the time to be doing this. But I have to say, I fundamentally disagree. This is the time to be making those investments. And in, you know, especially when you look at something like the Broadway Line or the extension of Surrey, these are things that won't be ready to, will be operational till 2024 or 2025. So I certainly have faith that we will be well past recovery by then and will be brought back onto an increased growth curve for ridership. So I completely agree with you, Karen. We need to be making these investments right now and certainly in the Sea of Sky is no different. And I haven't changed my position there at all.
Thank you.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, Speaker Emily Sturdian. Thank you for having me with us. I just wanted to flag a letter that UCC sent to you in your office on about two or three months ago, and also a few minister meeting requests that we have in journey with UBCM specifically around reforming the funding model for public safety and community health. So this is specifically a request to meet with Minister Farmane as well as Minister Dix to start to address some of the tensions that we've been seeing in terms of RCMP response to mental health crises and how a request for, for starting to review how we actually fund both public safety in our communities as well as increased support and funding models for mental health, drug use and addiction. And I just wanted to flag that again. Happy to release in the letter. So it's at the top of your inbox. And that's definitely something that I'm looking forward to filling in UCCM with the specific request to establish some sort of stuff that we can start to address and tease apart the challenges of the multi-jurisdictional reality of funding RCMP and mental health. I know that the province has established a special committee on reviewing the police act. Now, I'm curious if you have any insights on how that timeline might be looking going forward?
No, I don't. I'm sorry. But I was aware of the task force. And it certainly is a complicated issue. And the idea that we defund the police doesn't make a lot of sense either. So, but clearly, the issues around mental health and addiction and vulnerable populations and homeless are, you know, oftentimes, there are crises that need to be responded to. And so how do you create another team that is perhaps more suited to managing those crises than the police, which have to do, be everything to everybody? And it's, so I think it's well understood that there needs to be a more subtle approach. Or inevitably, it means additional resources, I can imagine. So then we also need to look at rural versus urban. And the aspect of who's, when, like, I think you guys pay, what, 90% of the police who cost money in Swamish, something like that?
Yeah.
And where the government doesn't pay any. So there's less influence on the police in the place like Kempford or the regional district. So, but thank you for bringing it up. I'll review the letter. And we have actually a caucus meeting in two weeks. And we have a caucus retreat, although it may turn into a, into a, it doesn't look like it's going to be in person. But nonetheless, it is, I believe that issue is on the agenda. We'll be, I'll have a better sense of what caucus wants to go with it. And hopefully, we have a session this fall where there'll be an opportunity to discuss these issues as well.
Thank you.
But I'll try to find a timeline for you.
Thank you, Emily Sturdian. Counselor Anderson, I know you had a question about how we can use the opportunity of spending estimate sessions in the legislature. I'm wondering if you want to follow up on that one now or if you had a different question?
Yes, I will follow up on that. Thank you, Chair. Jordan, who do we think we can be able to get together again? So I'm already looking ahead to the spring when we have the annual ministry budget estimate debates. And these are great opportunities for us to log particular themes or specific questions to the ministers with your assistance. And I'm just wondering, by that time, we can likely identify things that we might press the government on, whether transit, housing, tourism, infrastructure, Flint Road recreation budget? Do you have some practical advice as to how we can best work with you, whether in a meeting in advance, or what kind of lead time would you suggest? Based on your experience, how would you recommend that we work with you to take advantage of the opportunity of those spending estimate debates?
And interestingly, we just finished up those spending estimate debates a couple of weeks ago, as we went back at them two days a week for the summer. So then I did have some opportunities to ask some questions of the minister around Minister Daltonson with regard to forestry and that sort of thing. So you might want to just have a quick view of that to see.
Will do.
What we were talking about. So I think that the, generally speaking, you want to really have, whatever your event, you need to recognize that it needs to be, it needs to be applicable across the province as much as possible, anyway. And so recognizing this, like for FLNR and recreation budgets, for example, that we're at the pointy edge of things. And maybe, you know, if you live in the other parts of the province, you don't have the same, quite the same pressures. But ultimately, those pressures will be coming. And so it is appropriate to talk about how you look at this abuse management frameworks, for example, and balance the infrastructure with the demand and the impact on the environment. So, you know, I think to identify some of the big themes, certainly in the, through the Sea of Sky as an example, and then knowing that the budget will come up in February. And budget estimates start about two weeks after that, give or take, so beginning of March, and typically carry on right through till June, till the end of, beginning of May, so sort of two months, generally. And then it covers all the, all the various ministries. And it's useful, and you're right, it's a great opportunity because it doesn't tend to be adversarial. Although the ministers could certainly get defensive. And if ministers don't have answers, then they really get, they get uncomfortable. But it's an opportunity to speak to not just the finances, but the philosophy and the strategies and the messaging. And it gives you an opportunity to talk about just about anything and to go back and forth in a way that you, that in a formal debate is not really, doesn't really, isn't allowed for. And certainly, definitely not for question periods. So I would encourage you, and always have encouraged councils, to identify issues that are of concern. And then what will we do with, say, okay, what, how do we structure this so that it's relevant to everybody? Now, obviously, you get into, like, one of the things I talked to Minister Trevana about was, among other things, was like, when can we get the hillside completed out of Britannia, you know, for northbound for cycling? Obviously, that's not a, that's a very local issue. But it does speak to the issues of alternative modes of transportation and cycling and tourism and all this other sort of stuff. So you can, we can make it work. But ideally, we want to advance things that make sense, you know, or I understand their implications across the province. And refine the conversation, refine the requests, and back it up with some logic and some good rationale and see where we go with it. So I wouldn't worry too much about the budget, per se, and the timeline. But know that the various ministries will start coming up at the beginning of March. And so we want to be well in advance of that, identifying what are the areas of concern and then what we want to advance. Thanks very much.
Okay, Jordan. And I have a question for you. There's been a lot of talk in the news, at least, about hydrogen. And I know B.C. has completed a hydrogen feasibility study for B.C. Depending on how you use hydrogen, it could be part of, and how it's produced, part of a renewable green energy, or it could be an enabler of fossil fuels. And I have some concerns that the feasibility study leans much more towards the enablement of fossil fuel development. But I would like to understand from you where that feasibility stands in the process. And I'm also trying to relate it to, as we pursue the clean tech sector and try to understand what green technology looks like, what the province is interested in supporting, how that aligns with where the province is. So can you speak to where that feasibility study is in its process and in its discussions?
No, I can't. But I really don't have any insight into it at all right now. But I'm curious about our earlier comment. What, how is it an enabler of fossil fuels?
Well, I think if you're producing it, because you can produce it from water using solar, wind, renewable energy, and then it's completely green. Other times, it uses fossil gas, frac gas as a feedstock, it brings hydrogen from that, or as an energy source for the process. And then, you know, depending on how people calculate things, they say, well, we mix in some hydrogen with our natural gas, so it lowers the emissions profile below a certain threshold. And so now our natural gas is cleaner. And so it's this whole side of things. And the fossil industry has been pushing in some of their marketing, talking about the importance. They have a very short window to get governments entrenched in hydrogen, which basically means getting governments to subsidize hydrogen because renewables are coming on so quickly. And so, you know, as we're facing climate crisis, I'm very sensitive to how we're thinking about these technologies. So I was just trying to understand where the government is in that sort of spectrum of hydrogen.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I haven't really, I don't know, honestly. But I will, I'll see what I can find out for you. I don't feel, honestly, that it's a lot different than battery technology in that you can make electricity out of all sorts of things as well. So it's, you know, and this whole concept of greenwashing power. You know, I always viewed hydrogen as a great opportunity for a transportation fuel and that, especially in our situation, where we can use it for, create it from renewable sources that are, that perhaps we have access to at certain times, you know? It seems to me like a run of river and fresh air when we maybe don't need all of that power. So I think there's some great opportunities for hydrogen. And it allows us to do things that we can't do with other technologies. We just have to watch it and how it's being powered, certainly. I agree with you there, no question.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Let me, I'll talk to the minister. I'll give the minister's office a call and see what I can come up with.
Sure. Thank you. Looks like we've got about five minutes left. Mayor Elliott?
Thanks. Jordan, I just wanted to make sure that you've seen the Tourism Swamish member indicator survey from July 22 to August 4. And if you haven't, I can send you a link to it. But I think it's important to recognize that the tourism industry is still going to be struggling through the fall. And, you know, two-thirds of the members of Tourism Swamish are receiving funding through the federal government. And I think that anything that the province can do to keep money in the hands of small business and keep people connected to work through the winter is going to be important. I know, I know Mayor Compton has been talking about this for Whistler in terms of seeing this industry through. I know there's a big ask from the Provincial Tourism Industry Association for the use of the 1.5 billion. But I think locally, it's really interesting to see the level of optimism and also the level of fear about people's business futures in the short term, which is still over 50%. So I think it's important, context, to take into your retreat, virtual or otherwise, with your caucus, to understand that communities like ours, who rely quite heavily on tourism, are still feeling quite vulnerable in the months to come. And so a strategy to keep money in the pockets of those business owners is important.
Yeah, no, I, thanks for that. I certainly agree with you. I have the same concerns. I am, we had a fairly strong summer. But we have, we rely, especially in the way we're so much on destination visits. And, you know, be it in the food supply restaurant business that we're in, or just didn't otherwise, I'm pleased with the summer, but very, very apprehensive about what goes on going forward. And, you know, we did, I think, one of 15 weddings last summer, none this summer. Obviously, that takes a huge chunk out of our revenue stream at my farm. So we, we're quite concerned about where we're going here going forward. And I, yeah, I think one of the most important aspects is we encourage the federal government to continue on with a wage subsidy program. Although SERV has had its challenges. I think the employer wage subsidy has certainly been incredibly important and will be all fall. And I really don't see the border opening up particularly soon. And then you look at what Vail's brought, come up with in terms of their opening strategy and the limit to who's going to be, how many visits are going to be on a daily basis. I think the number, I believe I heard was 5,000 a day. While we're typically talking 20, and I remember working days of up to 30,000 people in a day, that is going to have impacts all down the corridor. So I'm sympathetic and equally concerned.
Counselor Harper?
Yeah, thank you. In the same vein, and kind of counterintuitively, we've seen an increase at our rec sites throughout the community to, they're just really overwhelming what's there with visits apparently really doubling from previous years. So at the same time, we need to make sure that we're supporting that. I don't see that changing. Most people that now have been, those that haven't, are going to be back. And of course, those pressures came with the park facilities being closed and those people being moved around, whether it's water slides or even as close to as cat lake and so on around Swamish. So it gets counterintuitive that we're having big challenges with visitors from, not enough to support some of our tourism businesses, but at the same time being overwhelmed with some other aspects as well. So I'll make sure that those two things, two opposites are happening. So I'll make sure that those two things, two opposites are happening at the same time and that is functional.
Yeah, I understand the challenge, certainly. I've been quite vocal about, I think the province has gone, has made some poor choices when it comes to parks. I really do. I, as an anecdote here, I put a counter, a store counter on the entrance to my farm. And for the first time, always wanted to do it and finally got around to it. And, you know, being conscious, obviously, of the fact that we have, you know, we have to pay attention to the business and as a community leader in terms of being safe and appropriate. But it was interesting that when I look at weekends at the farm, we're having more people on our farm than are allowed in Garibaldi Park. And that just makes no sense. And, you know, we've had, coastal health has been to the farm. I mean, it is not a, we had a long cable event. I mean, we've been working with the Health Authority on making sure that we're doing things right. But the idea that on my 55 acre farm, I can have more people than you can on the 30,000 hectares of Garibaldi Park, I don't understand that. So it doesn't make any sense. And it really just puts people, diffuses the, I think we should be really managing things more intensively and better, you know? And not just telling people they have to go some other place. I don't know. I don't understand how, like, I think about how many people at the cost go every day, yet we can't have people in the park. Why is that? It just doesn't make any sense. So yes, I know that, I'll give them current numbers. I haven't talked to Scott or Dave in the last couple of weeks, but we did, I did ask him for some additional counters on the office Swamish because they've got some car counters. And there's lots of anecdote out there that there's everything being overwhelmed. But I like to drive or move forward based on data. And I know that, I think you all know that F L N R has been doing some great work over the last number of years in the division management framework and helping better understand what the, what the carrying capacity is for various uses, various recreation uses in the sky and how we plan to build for infrastructure to support that and then where we want people and where we don't want people. By guiding the infrastructure and the transportation corridors, then we can do a better job with that and give people a better experience and a safer experience and less of an overall environmental footprint.
Okay, thank you, Jordan. We're over time, so I think we'll call that the meeting. Thank you very much for coming and spending some time with us. We look forward to working with you at the U B C M, which will also be virtual this year. And I just wanted to offer you 30 seconds if you want to give a few closing thoughts.
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and thank you for the opportunity. I'll look forward to getting some of your briefing notes for the minister because through the, for your U B C M meeting, whether you get the meetings or not, I'm sure you're generating those briefing documents. And it really just does help me help you if I have a really good understanding of what you're trying to achieve very specifically, be it for housing, be it, I think I pretty much understand the transit side. You know, we did touch on, well, maybe at another time, the gas price debacle that we see in Swamish and how Swamish was one of the poster points out for the ministry. But just better understanding where you want to go specifically. And if I, if I don't know, I don't know how much I can do. But I do have to say too that the mayor has been great in terms of keeping me informed and in terms of giving me a call if there's something that she thinks I need to be doing. And that, that makes all the difference. So thank you for your time and best of luck with your deliberations. And I'm sure I'll see you in the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, Jordan. Thank you, Jordan.
Bye. Thank you.
Please, Council, the next item on the agenda is Ms. Pollak for our resumption of limited in-person attendance and participation. Should we take five minutes or?
No.
Okay. So Ms. Pollak's just on her way in.
She can see me there?
I'm leaving herself with her mic or camera and this.
Does she know the camera?
Can you go tell her to put her camera on and her mic?
Doesn't there go a camera right now?
We're just turning on camera and mic here, I think.
We do need a mic. You can't unmute it?
Jordan, I'm allergic.
We can hear you.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Charlene Pollak. I'm the manager of Legislative Services. And I'm here today to present an update to council and the public on plans for council meetings during COVID, including continuation of electronic public participation and resumption of limited public in-person attendance and participation. And also to obtain some feedback on council regarding in-person public participation at committee of the whole meetings and council preference for participation. So we are having our first in-person, limited in-person attendance this evening at the 6:00 PM special council meeting. And notices have gone out for the public hearing scheduled for September 8th and September 14th, that the public may participate electronically and that there will be limited in-person public participation for those unable to participate electronically. And council members have the option pursuant to the procedure bylaw to continue to participate electronically or combination of in-person or electronic. So by way of background, this is the motion that was passed by council on July 7th. I'm not going to read the motion out, but public participation began at the July 21st special council meeting. So that was our first meeting where we had electronic participation via WebEx and telephone. And then we had a public hearing on July 28th, and we had robust electronic public participation at that meeting, and everything went, seemed to go very well. So the report that was presented to council on July 7th outlined Ministerial Order 192 requirements and direction to staff to develop a safety plan for in-person attendance at council meetings starting in September. And just by way of some research, staff reached out to 10 municipalities regarding in-person council meetings and just to find out what kind of these municipalities were doing and if they've got safety plans and if they would be willing to share some of that information. And we did hear back from all 10 of the municipalities, which was really helpful. And then we reviewed the provincial requirements and recommendations related to council meetings and the order of the provincial health officer regarding events and gatherings. So Ministerial Order 192 requires that local governments make best efforts to hold open meetings with the public in attendance. And the intent of that is for special and regular council meetings. And as part of the Ministerial Order, there were some guidelines that were provided to help reduce the risk of person-to-person transmission of COVID-19 during open meetings. And of the 10 municipalities that we reached out to, seven include or plan to include in-person public attendance at council meetings, and five allow or plan to allow in-person attendance at public hearings. Sorry, I'm just having a little technical difficulty here. Okay, so provincial guidelines included posting signage at the location, including the occupancy limit and ensuring effective hygiene practices, having a staff member act as a greeter and explain protocols and ask health screening questions. And we are required to have a separate entrance and exit and one-way walk-through. So we have established the main entrance leading into the arena as the entrance and then one-way traffic through into the auditorium. And then one of the side doors from the auditorium is the exit. And we are required to have, implement cleaning and sanitizing protocols for the meeting space before, during, and after the meeting to adhere to the physical distancing requirements, unless the two-meter distancing, and posting directional signage at the entrance to the meeting room. So we have done all of this. So for public hearings, a circular came out from the ministry in August, and it outlines that public hearings may be considered separately from council and board meetings. And it's entirely up to municipalities how they handle public attendance, whether that be electronic or in-person or a combination of both. So staff has developed a safety plan, and that was being attached to the memo. And it incorporates the guidelines of the ministry and also the provincial health officer orders for safety. And the plan also includes the layout of the Swamish Chief Activity Room at Brennan Park, including the entrance, exit, and traffic flow. And the plan is posted on the district website. It's been posted up at Municipal Hall, and we do have it up at Brennan Park as well. Okay, so ways for the public to participate. So as you know, the district uses the WebEx electronic meeting participation platform. So the public can participate using their computer by downloading the WebEx app to their telephone or by telephoning in, using a landline or cell phone. So it is pretty convenient and inclusive. There is the ability to view, for the public to view the live stream of the council meeting. And we are providing QR codes for various things just to make it easier for the public to access. So we'll have a QR code for the agenda as well. And there are a couple QR codes on the, on the safety plan. And then the public can also provide written comments to council. And then we have the limited in-person participation starting today. So in-person participation is limited to 30 members of the public. So that's well within the 50-person limit and for events. And it's being provided for those who are unable to watch the live stream of the meeting or to participate electronically or by telephone. The screen will be set up on the stage at Brennan Park, and the audience will be able to view the WebEx meeting views, so the same as what they would be able to see from home on their computer. And a podium will be set up for speakers that is connected to WebEx. And there will be no reason for the public to have to touch the podium. Trying to keep things as no touches as possible. So opportunities for public participation include submitting an application to appear to attend a delegation at a committee of the whole meeting or a special or a regular council meeting. And an application to appear needs to be submitted one week prior to the council meeting. And then at a special or a regular council meeting, there is unscheduled public attendance. So that's an opportunity if members of the public feel that their matter is urgent and can't wait until the next council meeting, they can make a request that council consider the matter. And then there's an open question period towards the end of the agenda, and that's related to matters discussed at that meeting. And then there are the hearing opportunities. So that includes public hearings, development variance permits, temporary use permits, and development permits where there's a variance request. So I'll just review some of the points from the provincial health officer order for gatherings and events. So a definition of event includes meetings. And gatherings for events are limited to 50 in attendance, no more than 50. And there's the two-meter distancing requirement. Access must be controlled, and the number of people in attendance must be closely monitored. So we will have, we'll have a greeter stationed at the entrance, and that person will have a counter, and they'll be counting people as they come in. And then we will have someone also stationed at the exit, and they'll be counting as people leave. And then you must have hand sanitizer readily available. We'll have that in multiple locations. Certainly at the entrance, people will be required to use hand sanitizers. And washroom facilities must be readily available, which they are. And it is a requirement to collect the name and contact information of every person who attends, and that information is collected in the event that it is required for contact tracing on the part of the medical health officer and will be retained for 30 days pursuant to the order. So as far as communication goes, we have detailed information on the district website with relation to public participation at council meetings. So that includes information about WebEx and how to participate electronically and also. and also information for phoning into meetings. And we will ensure that regular updates will be provided to the public in the event that there are any changes made to procedures and policies. And we do plan to put some information on social media and include in the EUs regarding ways for the public to participate. So we are currently in phase three of the BC Restart Plan. So just need to be flexible and ready for change in the event that we revert back to phase one or pursuant to any changes to public health orders or new public health orders. It is possible that we will be required to go back to electronic-only public attendance at council meetings depending on health officer orders. And then we will resume full public participation when we move to phase four. And then we'll just talk a little bit about resource impact. So for special council meetings with electronic and in-person attendance, there's an increase from four to nine staff members that are required. And then for public hearings with electronic and in-person public attendance, it is an increase from six staff members to 16. And impact will be similar for all municipalities. That includes electronic and in-person public participation during this time. Departments involved in running council meetings include legislative services, IT, communications, and planning staff. For a public hearing, the following rules need to be filled. So we, we have two moderators, one person who's announcing callers, a minute taker, corporate officer, a meeting recorder, IT staff at Municipal Hall and Brennan Park, staff answering the switchboard to assist with technical questions, two staff handling correspondents, and a minimum of six staff at Brennan Park. So there definitely is, is an impact. And that is it for my presentation, so happy to answer your questions. And I would ask, if I could get some direction on committee of the whole links from council?
And just for clarification, that's whether or not we want public participation at committee of the whole?
Public attendance.
Attendance, I should say. Okay, council, any questions or thoughts? Counselor Herford?
Thank you. Just over last time, we looked at the increase in staff required. Does that increase in staff, workovers got a reshuffle from some other duties? Do you have the capacity to, have you been absorbing that? Or has that been overworked for those, for those folks or those departments or houses?
To the chair, well, we are just starting in person today, but there has been an impact with staff for electronic. And really, it was just the two meetings so far, July 21st and July 28th. But the impact really will be on overtime for the evening meetings. And we will be needing some assistance from other departments, probably some staff from planning and communications.
So, thank you. And with that, with the committee of the whole, if we decide to, a similar, a similar structure, I know those, those people required to, to do this. So is it, is it a little bit of overtime, and you did forget the question? Or I'm just trying to understand the expense associated with the current, our, our new setup and what that would be if, if it was to be explored or treated?
To the chair, you know, the main expenses are, would be overtime for the evening meetings. But the number of staff required, you know, maybe a little bit less for committee of the whole. We may be able to have a person filming, act as moderator. So we, you know, may be able to reduce it by, by one or two people. But there's still a number of staff members involved.
I have Counselor French?
I too had money and budget questions with the question for Counselor Herford. So I'll follow that track a little bit. If we are on this track of lots of extra staff putting in lots of extra time, are we going to bump up against budget concerns in a month, in two months? Or is that not a concern at all?
To the chair, I think for 2020, we will be okay. There hasn't, for police services, there hasn't been a lot of overtime so far in 2020. But depending how long this goes into 2021, I have put in a budget request for additional funds.
Okay, and just as follow-up to this specific question of the valuable participation in committee of the whole, I absolutely support that. I, I think anything we can do and we should do in the arena of participation in, in our public meetings. Thank you.
Yeah, I have Counselor Stoner and Counselor Reese.
Thank you, to the chair. Paul, thank you so much for a very detailed report on the progress coming to the public safety plan. Similar to what Counselor French said, I think facilitating public attendance in any way that we can is really important. I do want to highlight that we have continued to go above and beyond in just facilitating public participation in our meetings throughout this entire pandemic in terms of enabling online public attendance. It's not always quite the same, but excited that we have moved forward and that's the opportunity of potentially facilitating public attendance for those who don't have the ability to attend online. I'm curious about the continued effort to run meetings in two locations. So I'm just curious why we, or if we did consider moving the chair to Brennan Park. I realize that that might reduce the number of people that we could have publicly at that meeting. But does that help reduce potentially the cost? That's my first question.
To the chair, that is something that we could consider in the future. It was more around IT capability of running everything out of Brennan Park at this time. I believe that they are looking at equipment that is required. So that is something that I think we can look at in the future.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question would just be about the consideration of adding committee of the whole meetings as well. Recognizing that we'd be using one of our core recreation facilities to support public attendance, does that mean that Brennan Park, the major facility, would then not be available for recreation facilities for all basically Tuesdays for the foreseeable future?
To the chair, that is correct. So if, for the days that we have committee of the whole, there are some Tuesdays where it's just an evening meeting. So the room would be available for recreation use on those days, but not on committee of the whole days.
Counselor Race and Mary Lee.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, thanks. I'm playing with buttons here. Thank you, and thanks, your good luck. Just on the issue of committee of the whole meetings, I don't see them as being kind of the same level as the special or the business meetings. The special or the business meetings, you know, we can pass legislation. Committee of the whole meetings are usually just discussion. And any kind of decision that comes out of them has to be, again, passed out of special or a business meeting. So I think, you know, the important thing about the special and the business meeting is that the public, on occasion, there's an avenue for the public to actually speak at the meeting. In, you know, business that can't wait for two weeks, it's urgent, et cetera. And so I think it's, it's important to protect that. So this evening meeting tonight would have the opportunity, if the situation arose in the agenda for a member of the public to say something on a particular issue. Committee of the whole typically, I'm just trying to think back, typically isn't like that. We certainly have delegations come to it, but we rarely have, they'll just join the table from the audience, at least not this term. We try to put a little bit more structure around them. So I don't see the same need for public participation as a speaker. I think it is important, though, that the public see what is going on there or have facility to see. And so I think, you know, it's more of a, of having a screen somewhere that members of the public can access if they don't have their own computer system or access one to watch it online. But maybe a slightly different format, because I don't think that they would typically have the opportunity to speak. The delegations and so forth, what we expect the committee of the whole meetings are usually determined, and they can come in through electronic means typically. So I see a slight distinction there between the two. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mary Lee.
Thank you, Ms. Pollak, for your presentation and the hard work that's going into this plan. I know it's not easy. And just talking to mayors in other parts of the province, how challenging it is to find the balance. And, you know, the communities that have opted for full in-person participation know that they're leaving out members of their community who are too afraid to come to in-person meetings. But they don't have the resources to buy all the technology at this point to enable that. So it's a conundrum whether you're doing it purely electronically or, or doing it in-person. I, I do have a question about the ability for council to attend at Brennan Park and how technologically easy or difficult that is, and if you perceive any risks to council attending at Brennan Park.
Thank you for the question. To the chair, you know, we have a safety plan in place, and we'll be really encouraging everyone to wear masks and, you know, follow the protocol, the separation and all safety protocols. So I, you know, I don't see, see a risk there. And I think that is something that we will be able to offer for council to be able to attend at Brennan Park. IT does need to purchase some equipment to, there's, you know, some issues with feedback and sound at this point. But that is something that we are looking at and will be able to accommodate in the future.
Thank you. I think in terms of committee of the whole, because of physical distancing and the need for our rec center to be as available as possible for programming, I wouldn't be supportive of having in-person attendance for committee of the whole. I agree with Counselor Race that special and, and regular meetings where we are making decisions, it is more important. And as you presented in your slides, there's other ways for people to be in touch with us through emails, through delegations, and requests, that sort of thing. And I think that keeping our recreation space available to the community during the day is going to be very important through the winter months. So I, I don't want to take up that space for one or two people that might drop off when we can provide other means for them to connect with the, the discussion at committee of the whole.
Thank you. And I too sense I, I also think it's important to make Brennan Park as available for recreation as we can. But I do, I do think the more we can do to encourage attendance and our participation is really important. I guess I, at this point, given everything that's going on, I'd rather see the resources that we might otherwise dedicate to committee of the whole meetings at Brennan Park to kiosks or more public Wi-Fi, that sort of thing, to make it easier for more people to attend remotely from different locations. And I think for me, that would be a better use of, of resources. Are there any more thoughts, counsel or Ms. Pollak? Do you have, is there anything you'd like clarity on?
Yes, thank you. Well, I would like to know, moving forward, we have a committee of the whole meeting next week. So some direction on, on whether we should have in-person public attendance at Brennan Park for that meeting.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor Anderson, and then maybe we'll poll council on that question.
Just briefly on the matter of committee of the whole, I've been agreeing with Counselor Race's observations. And I just wanted to suggest that we can be to our open, open meeting agenda planning team, our mayor, our deputy mayor, and senior staff to keep an eye on committee of the whole agenda items that may come up that we haven't considered, or circumstances we haven't considered. So our agenda planning base can play a role in offering advice on going on this matter. Thank you.
So I'm hearing then one suggestion to delegate the decision to the agenda planning group, and then a mix of people who would like Brennan Park to commit to the whole and some who wouldn't. So I think those are our three choices. Can we just do a straw poll here? Hands up if you would like to see committee of the whole at Brennan Park. Okay, and if you would like to have, delegate the decision to the agenda planning committee. Okay, and to hold off on public attendance at committee of the whole for now. Okay, so I think, do we want a resolution on that, or is that enough guidance?
Uh, I'm here, we've got, we've got Ms. Arthur.
If I might, acting mayor, I would recommend a resolution at this time that we continue to hold committee of the whole electronically only, electronically only. And that if, in the future, if circumstances change, we can reconsider and reopen to the public.
Okay, so, by Counselor Stoner, seconded by Counselor Race? Oh, no, sorry, I have a question from Counselor Stoner.
Yeah, I was just going to clarify there was a thing that Counselor Race brought up in terms of a potential ability to screen the committee of the whole, so not necessarily allowing for in-person public attendance per day, but still allowing for that to be screened somewhere, whether it is maybe at the library or, or some other smaller room that's not Brennan Park. I was curious if, if public service was a useful addition for Counselor Race wanting to acknowledge. I think, I feel like that could be a helpful addition in terms of making that viewing of the meeting available at home.
Okay, I'll go to Ms. Arthur, and then Counselor Race.
Thank you, Chair. I think that definitely staff can look at our location ability for any screens that we have and utilizing them. Whether or not we can make that part of Brennan Park's reopening. Again, we would have to put a safety plan in place that includes protocol and would include staff oversight. But that doesn't mean we can't do it. It just means it's going to take us a few weeks to get it into place and figure out what screen and, and what that would look like.
Okay, Counselor Race?
Thank you. And that was actually going to be my suggestion is that staff consider that because as was pointed out in the presentation, there are a number of ways that the public can watch these meetings like the one they're having right now. And if we feel that that's still leaving some people... And if we feel that that's still leaving some people unable to watch them, when I think, and somebody else mentioned the word kiosk, I don't know that you have to have as elaborate a system. But if we could possibly set up some area, whether it's use of libraries, computers, or something like that, if we do perceive that there is a gap. For the time being, I'm prepared to just continue the way we are. But I think that is the potential gap in the coverage that we might look to address going forward. And if ours is set.
Okay, Counsel Herford?
Thank you. As we were, as the discussion was progressing, I read a note here around the library and there's a safety plan in place there, and perhaps there's an opportunity to, given the numbers, for recollection anyways, from our average screen of the whole is very, very small, perhaps can be accommodated through the use of their computer terminals. And there is a plan in place now. And perhaps that would be a slot that people that don't have access to technology can specifically access the, our meetings. And I would encourage staff to afford that. And I think that might take out the, committee of the whole access issue itself. I just see handled with that capacity.
Okay, so by Counsel French?
And taking that one step further, Counsel Herford's pointing out to the face of the library, the 55th Activity Center is currently not being used, and is a nice place there that could potentially be used. So we have options. And as a former journalist, it's important to me that our meetings be open and accessible. And when I think about seniors in our community who just don't have access or understand the technology, many of them, their only option for attending meetings is to go to a place where there's a screen and there's audio, and they can hear. So I just, I know that the 55th Activity Center could be another place that we could explore. Thank you.
Okay, so what I think I heard was a resolution that we continue without public attendance at committee of the whole meetings, but staff investigate opportunities for a screening of those meetings. Let's practice that, Counsel Race moves that, seconded. Counsel Stoner, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So I think, are people okay to push through on the last item, or do you want a bit of a break? Counsel Stoner?
I have another question, but it is somewhat related to the topic.
Okay.
I was just curious, I think the component of making our meetings as accessible, as possible and available to in-person public attendance goes hand in hand with making council available and there as well. And I know the mayor asked a question about council attendance. I think we make that decision on a one-on-one basis. But I'm going with this, because I'm also curious about how we might be able to re-start at a safe public, or safe physical distance, some in-person kind of council coffee calls or chats in the park. I know the mayor had a chance to do, mayor dropped it in the park before the August break. But I think that those two things hand in hand might help facilitate some of the access to council that I think maybe the public is missing at this point.
I'm seeing some nodding. No hands, did you want to, for a resolution, that staff investigate that, or?
Sure, for the resolution, that communications staff review how we can restart council coffee calls in a physically distant space manner.
And Counsel French seconds that? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, I think unless someone yells at me, I'll try and push through the last mail. So we are, oh, okay. All right, I got yelled at, sort of quietly through the screen. So why don't we take then, come back at, let's come back at five to three. Is that working? Okay, so five to three, I'll see if I can. Okay, thank you, everyone. We're back, and we are on to the UDCM resolutions process. The resolutions have been divided up, and I think the ones we are wanting to talk about are just two of the blocks today. So there's a bunch that just aren't going to be considered. There's a bunch of resolutions that will be up for discussion. And then there's two blocks, one that the executive of UDCM has endorsed, and one that they have not endorsed. And if those blocks stand, then the endorsed ones will move forward as policy, and the not endorsed ones will fall away. But we have an opportunity by council resolution to remove items from either block, and then I believe they will be up for discussion, and they will be part of the block. So we could remove things from the endorsed block or from the not endorsed block. The council resolution needs to be to the executive, UDCM executive by September 18th. And this does need to be by council resolution. So this is our opportunity, if something you have, that you feel strongly about is in one of the blocks that you'd like moved out, this is our opportunity to do that. Counsel Stoner?
Yeah, I'll put a flag for protest, but there's also a special resolutions section. If anybody wants to make amendments to those, they also require a motion of counsel. So if you have any amendments to the special resolutions section, those need to go through us as well. Not that I have any, but one for them.
Thank you. So does council have any? Okay, I will take a crack at one then, not seeing anything from council. So NED eight, so this one is one that's in the not endorsed block. It's greenhouse gas limits for new buildings, came from Port Moody. And the UDCM rationale was that a very similar motion from the same proponent was put forward last year and was not endorsed. But I spoke to the sponsor of it, and she had actually, one of the main objections last year was a lack of support and engagement with small communities. And so over the last year, she spent time engaging with those small communities, and that was the change to the resolution, and actually asking for more engagement. So I think from my perspective, there's enough reason to bring this back this year and discuss it. I also note that in part of our discussions in our climate action plan, we've seen that 29% of our emissions come from buildings, and that is primarily from fossil fuel heating of the air and water. We know that a step five building with gas, heat, and water can have much higher emissions than step code, step code one building. So this is really important. We have climate crisis, we have less than 10 years to act. So I wanted to put forward that we ask the executive to remove this item from the not endorsed block. I don't know if there's a second or four of that.
One second for discussion, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Seconds for discussion? So any thoughts on this one? I guess I'd be curious to know the concerns people have with removing this. And maybe I'll be able to address them. Counsel Stoner?
So I have two questions. One, I'd be curious if the original, what people are saying, maybe part of it would be looking to reduce from the not endorsed block. And subsequent to, I also am curious about the last, for it to be a resolved, that doesn't include the Lower Mainland Local Development Association as part of the stakeholders in the liaison process, recognizing that the local, or LMLGA does cover a number of rural communities.
So I guess my understanding is that the proponent tends to bring this forward to her council, and District of North Vancouver Council will also be discussing pulling this. So there are a few municipalities that may be trying to pull this off of the not endorsed block. And in terms of LMLGA, I think we could put that forward as an amendment. I'm assuming if it was, if we're also pulling it. But also note that this did get endorsement from the LMLGA last year. So I think it went through the LMLGA, I believe, and then it was at UDCM that they did not consider. Counsel Stoner?
Yeah, so to the Chair, I believe that it has since added, that since the removal motion came forward last year, with endorsement through LMLGA, they have since added that last, whether it be a resolved clause, to address some of the issues with engagement in rural communities.
Oh, yes, yes, exactly.
But it also actually called up LMLGA as a stakeholder there. So from my perspective, it's just not fully thought through as a resolution. And I, given the format of the resolution process here at UDCM, I'm surprised if we got to those to get hold from the, any people have that requirement. And so I won't be supporting that.
Okay, anyone else? Mary Lee?
I'm just, I can't remember. Is there anything similar in the blocks that are going, do you recall?
Not that I saw, but that I went through.
I think for me, to support it, it should include the Lower Mainland LGA, because there are small communities in there, and this sort of ignores that fact. There's an assumption that the Lower Mainland LGA is on big cities. And I don't think it's work that the province is going to do to consult with staff. And by staff, the LMLGA has one staff member. So it's just not a well-thought-through process yet. I think, I'm supportive of the direction. But I suspect that we would have to amend it first, and it's not going to hit the floor in time. Which is unfortunate. I think there's so many good resolutions in here that some of them are ours that aren't going to see the light of day this year, which is unfortunate. Because I think they would prompt a really important debate on the floor of UDCM. And unfortunately, this streamlined process is going to limit that. So I would need to see amendments to this. I'm not sure that that's going to happen. But maybe, you know, if you've been in touch with the proponent, it's getting back in touch with them and getting them to amend their own motion and put it forward, amend it to include the LMLGA would be one positive step.
Okay, but if it's, if I could put this forward, to be frank, part of my thought process was that the UDCM executive, it's at their discretion whether or not they heed our request to remove it from the block. They may or may not even do that. But there's value in them getting this request from the few municipalities, because I think this is a very important issue. Even if they do decide to go along with it, it probably won't get discussed realistically. But I think, again, it is that keeping this issue top of mind, it is something that I think has come up in our discussions a lot. So I'm not necessarily overly optimistic that this would come to the floor and see a vote. But I think just being sort of a squeaky wheel on this issue, this particular one, I thought was used more than I would. If I was able to get confirmation that the proponent would amend this resolution to include LMLGA, is that something that is worth me pursuing prior to our next meeting? Okay, maybe I'll leave that one, take that offline for now and see what I can do. So are there any other resolutions or items that people wanted to pull? Okay, oh, Counsel Stoner?
Thank you. I'm scrolling through the resolutions book to find the actual wording of it. And so I went to, in the endorsement block, EV two, is police-based victim services. The resolution from the Sunshine Coast Regional District that calls for UDCM request to administer a public safety and split through general police, police-based victim services program to ensure their assets are funded on an ongoing basis to support and sustain the need for victim services. And I think that, to me, in some ways, this goes kind of counter to some of our efforts musically to have a broader conversation around how victim services are funded and are more robustly funded generally. So it flags for me as one that, yeah, I wasn't entirely supportive of being in the endorsement block.
So are you throwing something down to remove that?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second here? I will second that one. Mary Lee?
Yes, to the Chair, is what, what's the other model? I mean, this is the model that exists.
The other model, it was, sorry, to the Chair.
Yes, please go ahead, Counsel Stoner.
Yeah, so to the Chair, to me, the other model would be to support victim services through a health line, so not necessarily police-based victim services, but mental health support and addiction services. And perhaps police-based victim services is part of that. But I wouldn't like to see it as the only piece. So to me, this was just, to me, this resolution was missing context. Or it was very specific, perhaps, to an experience that they are having in the Sunshine Coast Regional District.
Mary Lee?
My understanding of our current victim services is that they connect people to the resources in the community that they need for whatever trauma they've experienced, whether that's mental health support or fleeing violence or those sorts of things. And that they also are supported through the court process, which requires police involvement. So in a lot of cases, the two are inextricably linked. But I've always found, when we've had presentations from victim services to council, the lens they place on it is not policing-based, but rather supporting the individual. And often those folks are there very rapidly after the police response. They're on call, they're available. So I'm a little bit worried of pulling it, because I actually think it's quite effective. But it's not to say we shouldn't have a presentation by our victim services team here and they get a better understanding of where the strengths in the system are and where some of the weaknesses are. But I think fully funding what we have is important.
So if I could add my two cents, I actually had some concerns. There was a number of resolutions, I think three or so, which talked in various ways about increasing police funding. which talked in various ways about increasing police funding for various things. Part of it seemed it was around smaller, normal community issues as opposed to the broader debate about how we deal with addictions and mental health issues and so on. But I was left a bit uncomfortable, given our own resolution and discussions. And so I am quite sympathetic to Counsel Stoner's concerns. I believe this, the resolution right after this one talks about funding the social services side of victim services more than the RCMP side. So that one made a lot of sense to me. So this is one that I did actually wrestle with and I would be comfortable supporting. And I am keeping in mind too that this is not a net right endorsement or rejection. It's just asking us to go to the floor for discussion. Mayor Elliott.
I was also just able to clarify that this is an municipal employee, not an RCMP employee. While we do share some funding with the province, we hire this person there. They're a member of the municipal staff.
Counsel Stoner, does that address your concern with the resolution at all?
Yeah, I can get help providing some context. I'm finalizing it in the endorsement block for now and pursuing our municipalities' approach in terms of more content as only one of our public duty.
Okay, any other comments from counsel? So I'll just make note of one that I wrestled with and it was from Abbotsford asking to expand the Trans-Canada Highway through the Fraser Valley. Was outright rejected last year and the comments from UDCM was, you know, we've never endorsed something like this or it's sort of out of the blue. It's kind of, well, you know, right rejected last year. They did add language around expanding it for the purposes of HOV lanes and EVs and so on and trucks. So I'm kind of uncomfortable with this. I mean, some of the EV piece is good, but for me, it fundamentally misses the gap. We have to get vehicles off the road somehow and it's a huge challenge. I don't know that bigger, better highways is the solution. This issue seems to come up again and again and again. This time the recommendation is from the executive to support it as part of the endorsed block.
The numbers?
I can't remember the number of it. That's the other one that I was debating when I was asked to support, to get that one pulled. Counsel Stoner.
So this one came, it's EV twenty-five. This came as a joint resolution between Abbotsford and the LMLGA executives because it didn't receive fulsome consideration at UDCM last year. It does speak to some of the transition to electric vehicles and the importance of rapid transit. I think from what I've heard from fellow colleagues of the LMLGA board, is that the real challenge is that, one, it has a huge impact on transit times as well as movement of goods and services. So there's trucks full of dairy that are going bad and spoiling as a result of congestion on the highway. So appreciate that there is a need to move away from having more vehicles on the road, but this is something that they have advocated for for a very long time from an economic standpoint for their community.
Mayor Elliott.
Yeah, this came to the floor, last Lower Mainland LGA. And it was hotly debated because at first this came as an expansion and then it was amended to make sure that that expansion was only for the movement of goods and transit and these types of vehicles. And then I believe it was forwarded because people recognize the importance of the movement of goods. And the longer those big trucks are idle, the more fuel they're burning. And so it was trying to find a win-win for that region as well as promoting transit and not building another lane for cars. That was the problem that most local governments had with the original resolution is that we keep widening highways, people will just keep filling them with similarly used vehicles. I think this resolution acknowledges the feedback they got from the Lower Mainland LGA, that this isn't about moving more people in cars, this is about moving goods and people in transit. So I'm okay with this.
Okay, so it sounds like we are comfortable with that one as is in general. I guess this is last call for any thoughts before we ask for a motion to terminate. Any last thoughts? Nope, same thing. I have an option to terminate. Counsel Herford, Mayor Elliott, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Nope, that carries. Meeting is done. And wait, we are back at 3:30 on the, on Blue Jeans? Okay, so the Blue Jeans link at 3:30. We'll see you there. Thank you.